Okay, good evening and welcome to our February 4th, 2025 Clayton City Council Meeting. We're starting a little bit early this evening because we're going to be conducting Planning Commissioner interviews and we have three candidates. First, we'll do the call, well, I did the call to order, the roll call.
Councilmember Diaz?
Yes.
Ania?
Here.
Tillman?
Here.
Vice Mayor Juan?
Here.
Mayor Trupiana?
I'm here.
Thank you. You have a form.
Okay, and if everyone will rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberated, and just as a law.
Thank you. Okay, and we're going to start our first interview this evening and our first candidate is Charlie Schmidt. And Mr. Schmidt, would you, got it? If you haven't, okay. Mr. Schmidt, would you like to come to the podium? And we do have your application. We're going to ask you a series of questions. I was thinking, we've got four questions. We want to keep it the same for everybody. Maybe the fifth person, bless you, maybe the fifth person who goes, can think of something that hasn't been asked yet or the candidate has not addressed. But, Mr. Schmidt, would you like to tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're applying for Planning Commission?
First of all, thank you for inviting me to interview for this position. I'm a longtime Clayton resident. I moved here from the East Coast, from New Jersey. I moved here from New Jersey in 2002. I enjoy Clayton. And so, a little bit about my background, my wife and I have been married, will be 49 years this year, both from New Jersey, both born in the same hospital, high school sweethearts. I have a bachelor's degree in chemistry biology with a teaching certificate. I have a master's degree in biochemistry, worked on two different PhD programs, and I taught organic chemistry to environmental engineers at University of Florida for 10 years. I also have a history of being in the military. I spent 28 years in the Army Reserve, so I'm a retired Lieutenant Colonel. But that's not why I applied for this position. So I applied for this position because I believe that as a retired person, I have time and I should be giving back to a town that I quite frankly love. My wife and I have been doing the Oktoberfest for 20 years, complete volunteer program, and we give a lot that way. But there's more than I can do. And when this position opened up for the Advisory Committee, I jumped on it as something that I see myself doing. Because of my background, organizational skills, military leadership, things like that, I think that this would be a good, good position for me to assist in this, this role. I'll leave out all the other specifics and take it from there.
Okay, thank you. Who would like to ask the next question? Okay, Vice Mayor Juan?
It's not a mystery because we have a list. So you did mention just briefly about some of your background, but is there anything in your background that, or educational work experience that you think is particularly relevant that would have prepared you to serve on the Planning Commission? I'm not sure of your familiarity with the work that they do, but, you know, whatever you think that you could draw from.
Yeah. So, in the military, I was a, I was a planner, right? So, planning takes place on many different levels, whether it's military or it's an advisory committee. But you have to look at all the facts and assumptions. You have to develop courses of action, and then you have to make recommendations. And those recommendations have to be made on things consistent. If you're in the military, it's goals and objectives. If you're in a city like Clayton, it has to be based on, you know, city objectives and things like that. So I believe that those align themselves well, my background especially there. But also being educated in science, I tend to look at stuff analytically. So it's not just a knee-jerk reaction. It's looking at all the facts and then making decisions based on those facts.
Thank you.
Next, who would like to go next? Go ahead, Rich.
What do you see has your, has the role of being a Planning Commissioner? So, to assist the city on developmental proposals and land uses within the city, which are consistent with the local state goals and policies, is what I see. Now, you know, I went online to see exactly what that role entails, and there's not a whole lot there. But I see it as basically, as ideas or proposals come forward, are those land uses consistent with the goals and objectives of the city itself? And that's what I see the goals are. Thank you.
Who would like to go next? Councilmember Tillman or Diaz? Go ahead.
Thank you. This one's lengthy, but I'll try to make it succinct. Planning Commissioners at times address issues that may have differing opinions throughout the community and commission. Knowing the definition of a Planning Commissioner you just stated, how would you approach these differing views? And how would they impact your decision-making as a Planning Commissioner?
Well, so, first and foremost, it's important to understand the ordinances, the policies, the goals and objectives of the city in order to make any sound recommendation. And you want to make sure also that they're in compliance with local state policies and guidelines. So you have to arm yourself with all of that information before you can make any, any, let's just say, opinions or recommendations. Now, at times, you know, personal bias could get in the way, but those also have to be put on the back shelf when you're looking at things like, is it even legal? Is it, does it fit with the purpose of Clayton? So, and then, of course, you want to consult people. You want to get as many opinions as possible before, you have to take all sides of the points of view.
Thank you.
Councilmember Diaz, would you like to ask the next question?
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and ask that. What are some major issues you believe could come in front of the Planning Commission in the next two years?
Well, having been a longtime resident, things that come up are long-range housing and growth management issues within the city, right? And there seems to be very different approaches to that. But it needs to be consistent and unified. So I think what's going to happen in the next couple of years, Clayton will continue to strive to be the town we want it to be, but it can't remain as it is. It will move forward like it has, you know, in its history. So we will need to do, as your thing says, the right thing, because it's the right thing to do. And we will have to look at those issues moving forward and make those recommendations so that people can act upon them, not just this year, next year, but five and 10 years down the road.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have any other questions for Mr. Schmidt? Go ahead.
So, given your long-term residency, has there been any action by either the Planning Commissioner or the Council in the past several years that you either strongly agree with or disagree with, that you think the, you know, in terms of, from a Planning Commissioner's perspective?
None that I've strongly felt agreeable or disagreeable to. Obviously, I had dug into the details as I should have, right? Had I been on this committee several years ago, I would have dug into all the issues, weighed all the facts, developed course of actions, and moved forward. But I can't say there's any that strike me as one way or the other that I felt about. And like I said, you know, until I retired, I was working full-time and doing Oktoberfest, which seems like a full-time job for the last 20 years. So I didn't get involved with other issues.
Thank you.
I'd like to hear a little bit more about your, what you're saying about the difference between today and the future.
Yeah, sure. So what happens, and we see it at the federal level, new elected officials come in, policies change. So what would have been a priority today may not be a priority next year, 10 years. So, for example, housing regulations may come and change. We have to be, we have to be mindful of that and aware of that, that those rules and regulations can change. And I think if we have sound judgment now, that will carry forward down the road. Without the sound judgment now, we become like a leaf in the stream, and that's not where we want to be.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Schmidt, is there anything else you want to tell us before we move on to our next interview?
No, but I'm open to any more questions that you might have. I understand, this is canned questions. So if you have any personal questions you'd like to ask that aren't on this, please feel free. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I believe our next candidate is on Zoom, joining us via Zoom this evening, and that's Nate.
Good evening. Yes, I'm here.
We can hear you.
Hopefully you can see me as well. I'm sorry for the provocation. Can you hear me and see me?
Yes, we can see you. Nate, thank you very much. So, we are all here. We've read your application, and we have some additional questions we'd like to ask you this evening. But before we do, would you like to tell us why you've applied for this position on the Planning Commission?
Yes, thank you for the opportunity. I am a 10-year resident of Clayton. I have two daughters and a beautiful wife, and I care greatly about the area in which we live and very much would like to be a part of implementing the institutions and areas for which we can enact change positively. So thank you very much for the opportunity to speak this evening, and thank you for letting me participate on Zoom.
Thank you very much. Who would like to ask the first question? Vice Mayor Juan? Go ahead. Let's keep the order.
All right. Nate, so how has your background, education, or work experience prepared you to serve on the Planning Commission specifically?
Thank you very much for that question. So there's two areas that I would point to at a local level. So I have served as a treasurer of my HOA in Shop Roll Springs, and then, most recently, I've served on my local school board at Ignatius Valley Christian School. And both of those positions have allowed me the opportunity to see the bandwidth and depth of which an opportunity like this would exist, and also afford me the opportunity to see the perspective from a community standpoint of planning, budgeting, decision-making, and processes that impact homeowners in the area. From a personal perspective, in my current role, I interact predominantly with public sector, plan sponsors, and healthcare. And so I'm intimately aware of the inner workings from a HR perspective to city manager, et cetera, and so on and so forth. And so, for those reasons, you know, those are the educational and background and experience perspectives I would point to, to say specifically that I feel adequately positioned to be speaking to this position.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Ania?
What do you see is the role of a Planning Commissioner?
Thank you very much for that question. First and foremost, I would say that, in terms of this role, being informed of the general plan, the town plan, the municipal code, and the state law is first and foremost, and having familiarized myself with that, is just a, you know, benchmark in terms of understanding the scope and responsibilities of what this role entails. A Planning Commissioner balances growth and preservation, ensuring the development that aligns with the city's long-term vision and community needs. Beyond that, it is reviewing the zoning, land use, and infrastructure proposals and making recommendations that the City Council ensuring compliance with the aforementioned things that I said. More than anything, it really boils down to the economic growth, environmental sustainability, and community well-being.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Tillman?
Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight, even though it's on Zoom. So this one's lengthy, so bear with me. Planning Commissioners at times address issues that may have differing opinions throughout the community and commission. Knowing the definition of the, of a Planning Commissioner, you just stated, how would you approach these differing views? And how would they impact your decision-making as a Planning Commissioner?
Thank you, Councilmember Tillman, for that question. First and foremost, I think that differing viewpoints enrich the decision-making process. It's very important to hear dissenting points so that you can take all areas that are involved in a decision-making process and have that be part of the end result. More than anything, fact-based decision-making is paramount, ensuring that proposals align with the city's general plan, zoning ordinances, and long-term goals are the focus of anything in this role. Actively listening to all stakeholders, residents, business owners, and fellow commissioners, so that a common ground can be found with the utmost importance of finding that you are able to uphold the city's policies. And then finally, I would say, more than anything, really boils down to serving the broader community interest. If a developer is to come in, despite the laws that are in place to allow that, it has to serve the city well good. And to that point, that is what distills and boils down to me as what would be most important in making those decisions and ingesting those differing opinions that can come in as a part of this role.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Diaz, do you want me to ask the next question, or would you like to? Okay. Okay, great. Terrific. Next question, Nate, is what are some major issues you believe could come in front of the Planning Commission in the next two years?
Yes, I think my, the prior candidate spoke to this, but I mean, there are inevitably going to be zoning changes that are going to occur. There are federal and state changes that are going to be, have to be considered as a part of this role. I think the other areas that you have to look at are, infrastructurally speaking, and transportational improvements. You know, it's no secret, you know, from a commercial and retail development standpoint, what that entails. But when you think about that, and along with the changes, you know, thinking about the environmental sustainability that goes along with that, ensuring that whatever, you know, decisions are made as part of the Planning Commission, support from an economical standpoint, and coupling that along with an environmental sustainability perspective.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Diaz?
Yes, Nate, I'd like to hear a little bit more about your education or specialized training that you may have acquired that would assist you in discharging the role as a Planning Commissioner.
Sure. By no means do I consider myself an expert entering into this role. But at the same token, I'd like to speak to my experience, specifically in the public sector. The organization that I work for, we support the fact that they offer healthcare benefits to their post-65 retirees. And so navigating that element within the public sector has been something that I've been able to ingest, be able to understand. And along with that, coupling with the fact of the inner workings that go along with the public sector and plan sponsors in that respect. So to the standpoint that, you know, no city or county or school to choose is the same, but understanding the dynamics and inner workings that go along with that is intrinsically important, and something that I have excelled at, and something that I look forward to my consideration as a part of this role.
Thank you. But there's been no specialized training that you've acquired that would enhance your ability to be a, to be a Planning Commissioner?
I would ask, you know, that, that question wasn't posed to the prior candidate. So at the same token, I'm trying to understand the line of questioning relative to the experienced understanding of the question.
Because it's a question, I'd like to hear your answer.
No, I understand that. I'm just trying to understand specifically what you're trying to distill into relative to the response that I can provide.
Do you want to elaborate on your question?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay, Nate, thank you. And is there anything else you would like to tell us before we conclude?
I just have one more question that I would like to ask. Yes, the question was asked, the question was asked previously, are there any actions in the last several years you felt strongly about? So are there any actions that took place that you would like to address? So the question was, are there any actions in the last several years you felt strongly about? So actions by the Planning Commissioners and/or City Council? And I'd like to know your response to that question.
Sure. I, I would speak at a macroeconomic level relative to the plans of the state to affirmatively fare further housing. You know, developers certainly adhere to the laws that are, you know, put in place. And to that point, the public having the opportunity to have their voice heard. So what I would say relative, back to your question, Councilman Tillman, is that there are certainly things that have come up over the years, and I would look to be a collaborative figure within that and be an instrument within the community to promote the voice of the community to be heard and reflected in those decisions.
Okay, so there weren't any in the last couple of years that you felt strongly one way or the other about any developments that occurred?
If we're speaking specifically about the Olivia Project, that's something that I can speak to. What, what I would say is that my opinion is that the actions that were taken reflect in the outcome.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you, Nate. Is there anything else you'd like us to know before we move on to our third and final interview?
Just that I greatly respect and appreciate the opportunity to be considered for this position. I am a proud resident, father, and very appreciative of this opportunity to have the opportunity to speak to this, this audience. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Nate. Okay, and at this time, we will ask Natalie to come to the podium, our third and final candidate. And Natalie, I will ask you the same thing I asked the other candidates. Give us a little background and let us know why you're applying for this position this evening. Thank you.
Press the button. Thank you. I think I would know that by now. Thank you so much. I've been a resident of Clayton for about 17 years now, raised three kids here, vowed I'd never live in a small town again, having grown up in one in northern New Jersey, which actually hasn't changed much since I've been there. And that was 60-plus years ago. So I'm very charmed by Clayton. I'm very moved by Clayton. I've had a lot of wonderful experiences. I've watched the growth, sometimes more closely than others. And I would like to be a part of this. I'd like to have a voice in where we go, what we do. You know, it'd be a privilege to be able to, to have an instrumental hand in making policy moving forward. That's what interests me.
Thank you, Natalie. Vice Mayor Juan, next question?
Yes, so how has your background, education, or work experience prepared you specifically to serve on the Planning Commission?
It has not specifically, Vice Mayor Juan. I too am in healthcare. I'm a nurse practitioner, and I work as a regional director for Kaiser Permanente. So I can tell you that I'm very good with patient care, discharging patients. I'm also pretty good at working with complex disputes among people, among labor, among management, among all sorts of things. What do I know specifically about engineering, zoning, and things precious little? Am I curious? You bet. Am I interested and committed? Do I love our town? Yes. No. Do I have special considerations? No, sir, I don't.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next question, Councilmember Ania?
What do you see is the role of a Planning Commissioner?
Councilmember, so as a citizen appointed to the local government to kind of help to shape where the city goes, to keep in mind what its sort of North Star is, if you will, and more importantly, how it's going to move and evolve forward. You know, I think Clayton is a very charming place. We're sort of, we're tucked away, we're a secret to some degree. We're an open secret, but we're changing. And I think that we have the opportunity to change in very positive ways. I'm excited by the downtown. I love the new restaurant that opened there. I love to see the energy, the younger people. So how do we balance all of that with keeping our town, you know, keeping our, our grounding in the sort of, in all that is good from the past? Of course.
Okay, next question, Councilmember Tillman?
Thank you, Mayor. Planning Commissioners at times address issues that may have differing opinions throughout the community and commission. Knowing the definition of a Planning Commissioner that you just stated, how would you approach these differing views? And how would they impact your decision-making as a Planning Commissioner?
Thank you. So, in much the same way as I approach it in the workplace, you know, I believe firmly that everybody needs to be heard. Everybody's voice should be heard. Everybody has, is entitled to their opinion and their way of looking at things and their paradigm as everybody else. So I would listen. I would spend a lot of time listening. I would learn, too. You know, I think another very essential thing of taking on any volunteer position that one does not have specific training for is to get some training, and to learn, and to listen, and to get better at it, and to hear, to hear from everybody. So what I would do in that case is all of those things I've just said, and then, you know, make as informed a decision and recommendation as I could. And if I felt I needed more time, I would try to take it.
Thank you.
Of course.
And I will ask the next question, which is, what are some major issues you believe could come in front of the Planning Commission in the next two years?
So everyone seems to be kind of touching on, say, the, the projects that involve more affordable housing, things of this nature. I think it's never been a more important time in history to be mindful of ethics in people and taking care of our fellow creatures. And I'm very much invested in that, just from the human standpoint. Don't get me wrong, I also love that we have, you know, some of these lovely destination restaurants, too. So how can we balance? How can we keep our humanity and also keep Clayton the little jewel that it is?
Wonderful. Thank you. Councilmember Diaz, do you have?
No, I don't have anything further. Thank you.
Okay. And Vice Mayor Juan, do you? And Vice Mayor Juan, do you want to ask that question? You asked the other candidates? Yeah.
I don't know. So in the past several years, given your long-term status as a resident, has there been any decision by the Planning Commission or the council in regards to things that may come before the Planning Commission that you either strongly agreed with or disagreed with? And why, maybe?
Right, why not? You know, there was a point a couple of years ago when the community church was going to do a large sort of revamp of the, with the space that I guess they now occupy that was apparently, from what I understand, a steakhouse years and years ago. And that didn't happen. And frankly, I think that was a wise decision on the part of the Planning Commission. I think it was better used in another way. What that way is remains to be seen, but I sure like to see it.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Natalie. Is there anything else you'd like to tell us before we conclude the interview this evening?
No. Again, I really appreciate the opportunity to come before you and talk even without the background. Again, I love Clayton. I'm committed, and I thank you for your time.
We thank you, and thank you to all of the candidates. Later this evening, we will, we have an action item. We will be selecting someone from the Planning Commission for the open seat. That concludes item number three. And we will now go into our regular agenda, and it looks like we're right on the nose here, seven o'clock. Are there any public comments on non-agenda items this evening? We have one card. Okay, and our first speaker this evening is Connie Horton. Connie, would you please come to the podium? You will have three minutes. Be sure to turn on the microphone.
Okay, good evening, mayor, members of the city council, and city council, city manager. I'm Connie Horton. I'm a resident of Clayton for fifty years. With deepest consideration in respect to all concerned, we need a return to civil discourse and a standard for behavior in the city council meetings. Although we did not initially see the problem with Zoom calls, we soon realized that those calls enabled personal attacks and public shaming toward at least three of the council members. Those calling in, as well as certain members of the audience, are emboldened to violate the rules of decorum by making rude, obnoxious, loud accusations and comments that stir up people who wish to remain civil. Decline of civility is a choice. Having interested parties email their remarks and addressing them in the council meeting is an excellent idea because it is more concise and has given the person making the suggestion or complaint a chance to evaluate and think their words through without a lot of personal emotion, meltdowns, and drama. We have personally witnessed someone in the audience at a council meeting physically stand over and harass another person in the audience whom he disagreed with to the point that it required a police officer to remove that person from the premises. This threatening behavior must not be tolerated. People need to learn once again how to have civil discourse and how to speak to each other with respect in person. Technology, meaning the Zoom calls, does not accomplish this and creates cyberbullying, driving citizens apart. We also experienced two women behind us using vile and vulgar language towards Jeff Wan, calling him nasty names as he was speaking. This behavior is unacceptable. In addition to these comments, we appreciate the council member and city manager attending to the real issues that Clayton is facing regarding the maintenance of our city. Decline is a choice. When landscape, streets, and weeds are not attended to in Clayton, there are serious consequences. We appreciate that most of you chose to make those issues your top priority instead of claiming moral virtue to advance your own agenda. Okay, that's, I'm done, and my husband's going to finish the remarks. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Horton. Dane Horton, you're up next. And you will have three minutes.
Good evening, councilmembers, mayor. Appreciate your time. Thank you. Good to see you, city manager. I am Dane Horton, a twenty-three-year resident of Clayton. And along with the previous issues that were just addressed by Connie, we would like to express that one of the things that's not on the list of priorities would be an investigation into why city employees leave their job for whatever reason. No one cares. Turnover is not an issue for most people in Clayton, and it would be very difficult to find a group or more people that would want an investigation on that issue, but rather spend time investigating persons or person responsible for inviting Black Lives Matter and other thugs into our town, causing neighbors and business owners to board up the town for approximately two weeks while the protests were going on. There were false rumors of racism, police profiling, and calling our city as sundown town. This was a disastrous turning point for our sweet, friendly, and welcoming city. This threatening and hostile activity violated the majority of citizens' desire to maintain our small-town charm, which is a reason most of us moved here many years ago. We also do not want to turn our town into a, quote, "gay Mecca," unquote, which has been mentioned as a goal of one of the recently transplanted neighbors. We must stop tolerating the intolerable and pretending that this behavior is our new normal. No more sweeping these issues under the rug. We also support the flying of our National Stars and Stripes flag, the California State flag, and the Clayton City flag if we, when we get one, and occasionally even the MIA or POW flag on the city property and at public schools. The new city manager may not realize that the council voted on a six-color rainbow flag to be flown during the entire month of June some months ago, some years ago, excuse me. But the following year, the flag was swapped out for a political progressive flag. We don't support a political flag flying on city property. The practice of flying political flags from city property has got to stop. It only causes divisiveness and animosity among Clayton residents that we had not previously experienced. Thank you for your attention to these issues and any efforts you make to correct them. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Horton. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on non-agenda items this evening? Thank you for shutting that off. Okay, then I'm going to close public comment, and we're going to move on to the consent calendar, item number five. Does anybody have? Have we reviewed the minutes? Is there any comment, questions? No? Any public comment on the consent calendar? No? Okay, I'll close public comment, and...
Move approval.
Second?
Second.
We have a, we have a councilmember Diaz and a second by councilmember Ania. Will you please take the roll?
Councilmember Diaz?
Yes.
Ania?
Yes.
Tillman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Juan?
On account of me being absent, I will abstain from this.
Vice Mayor Trippiana?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, Mayor Trippiana.
That's okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, we'll close item number five and move on to recognitions and presentations. And again...
Did I miss a public comment?
I did. Yeah, I did, yep. Sometimes I forget, but I did do public comment. We have a program that we really want to keep active this year, or I do, called Unsung Heroes, because we have so many of them in the community that do things thanklessly and heroically and are just amazing contributions to our community. And I immediately thought of my friend and neighbor, Linda Pender, for our January Unsung Hero. And I'm going to read a little something, and then Linda, I know you're here, I'd like you to come up and award you with a certificate and be free to say a few words. But Linda has been a resident of the Clayton community for thirty-one years. She moved here in nineteen ninety-four. She has given back to the community in so many ways and has provided so many outstanding contributions. And I'll read a few of them, but I'm sure there's some that I may be forgetting. She's the second vice president of the museum operations and donor relations at the Clayton Historical Society, and most likely the person you will see on Wednesday and Sunday afternoons if you pay a visit to the museum. Linda also helps manage the gift shop, provides historic tours of the downtown upon request, and helps coordinate and run the third-grade field trips every spring. She also makes and donates handmade goat milk soap sold in the museum. The museum does have a gift shop if you haven't been there. It's quite nice. She's also a member and past president of AAUW, and that's the American Association of University Women. That's the Clayton branch. She's a tireless volunteer for Clayton Valley Village, usually in that top two or three tier of most miles driven for transportation as a volunteer for the village, handling some of the most requests. And she was actually awarded a certificate of appreciation at the Clayton Valley Village annual meeting on Sunday here in Hoyer Hall. She is also a past member of their board. She's also formerly a member of Clayton Trails and Landscape Committee, and it was while she was serving on the committee that they came up with the proposal for the Landscape Maintenance District. So thank you for that. She's also a board member of our Chapel Hill Springs HOA for sixteen years. And I just want to thank Linda for all you do for our community. It's a better place because of people like you, and I'd like to award you the certificate.
Thank you very much. It's nice being appreciated. I retired about eighteen years ago, and that's when I started getting involved in all these volunteer activities. So I highly recommend it. I get a lot of fulfillment, a reason to get up if you're not going to a regular job. And the Historical Society and the museum can always use more volunteers, especially with the third-grade field trips, which are usually in April and May. And Clayton Valley Village, as some of you know, is a very worthwhile organization since we do not have a senior center in Clayton. And I drive, I'm driving people, sometimes two or three times a week, sometimes two or three times a day. And I get a lot of, it fulfills me. So thank you, thank you so much.
Linda, thank you so much. Do we want to do a photo? Can we do a quick photo, Linda? Can we do a group photo? Yeah. So again, we're going to be doing Unsung Heroes once a month, so feel free to tell us or email us any of your suggested unsung heroes, and we're hoping to bring them all together at the end of the year for a pizza party. I just want to say in response to Clayton Valley Village, they had their annual meeting Sunday, and I learned that they fulfilled six hundred and eighty-one requests for service last year, which is pretty tremendous, and Linda was one of the top volunteers. I'm honored next to providing, is Peter here yet? Not yet, okay. Well, he's on his way, though, right?
No, he's working.
Okay, so I thought he was on his way. So let, we'll go ahead. So the exciting thing is that we've had so many wonderful anniversaries of businesses recently, thirty years with Headsmonville Girl last year, fifty years Skipolines, and Cup of Joe is turning twenty. They're having their twentieth anniversary on February tenth. And so I'd like to award a proclamation, and then we'll hand it to you, and if you would like to say a few words. But I know other people might want to say a few words about Cup of Joe, so.
He asked to be the presenter for...
Okay.
Hi, Tech. So thank you. My name is Marsilio. I'm a friend of Pedro and Christina. So, and like me and many others, we go every day, almost every day, to the Cup of Joe. So that's a place, he asked him to represent here. He really couldn't be here, but he wanted to ask you for the honor, for the recognition. Cup of Joe is there for twenty years, like you said. Thank you for that. And it's a cozy place. It's a place where he does the coffee as we do at home, so with the Brazilian coffee and other coffees. And became a kind of really friendshipy community with members, people going every day for a long time. So he wants to thank you, everybody who goes every day and who doesn't go every day but goes, and by the, again, for the recognition and for being here, okay?
I'm going to read the proclamation, and then I'm going to hand it to you. And then if anybody else wants to say a few words, because it really is a wonderful little place. So honoring Peter Barbosa and Christina Ferreira, his wife, on the twentieth anniversary of the opening of Cup of Joe. And by the way, Christina's middle name is Josephine. That's how they got Cup of Joe. So it's just J-O. Whereas the city of Clayton gratefully acknowledges the invaluable contributions of Peter Barbosa's, yeah, Peter Barbosa's and Christina Ferreira to the community, recognizing their unwavering dedication and support that has enriched the lives of Clayton residents. Whereas on February tenth, two thousand and five, Peter Barbosa and his wife Christina and Christina's mother opened Cup of Joe in Clayton at sixty-fifty-four Main Street, where they still reside today. Whereas Peter and his wife founded the coffee and, founded the coffee? I may have been missing something there. And primarily catered to moms and their children and the after-school crowd. Twenty years ago, it was the place to go after school with a line out the door. They provide hot, today, they provide high-quality frozen drinks, coffee, tea, ice cream, and delicious baked goods in a unique, warm, friendly environment at affordable prices. The success of the coffee shop over the past two decades has been largely attributed to their steadfast commitment to provide quality products in a cozy, welcoming meeting place. Whereas their most popular offerings over the years have changed, one thing remains constant. It's the same gray coffee provided by Olympus, he wanted me to mention that, delicious baked goods, and great customer service. And whereas Peter and his family have been a cornerstone of consistency and tradition in Clayton for two decades with an unwavering commitment to service and generosity, therefore, the mayor and the city council proudly presents this proclamation to Peter Barbosa and his family on their twentieth anniversary of opening Cup of Joe in sincere recognition at their... continued contribution and dedication to this community.
Thank you. I want to say that's all true.
Does anybody want to say a few words about Cup of Joe? Well, come on, CW, absolutely.
Well, we were hoping Peter was going to be here. I know you invited us to be here. Appreciate that. Mayor, I'm CW Wolf, president of the CBCA, former mayor. And we are proud to have Peter as a member, as many of our business community members are members of the CBCA as well. And so, we got together, and we emailed each other, and we developed a banner for Peter's business to put up for the rest of the year, which has, well, I'll show it to everybody here.
I think we might need a photo with that banner.
And so, this is congratulating Peter and Cup of Joe for being Clayton's gathering place for the last 20 years here in Clayton. We have the city logo, and we have the city logo there in conjunction with each other, and of course, the Cup of Joe logo.
That is beautiful. Let's get a photo with that, for sure. Come on up, everybody. Let's go. This is wonderful. I also, I'm going, oh, did you want to say something? Go right ahead. Absolutely.
So, my wife and I have been coming to Cup of Joe's for about 15, 17 years or so. And it kind of reminds me, I mean, it's a quaint little shop, very nice, and I'm going to age myself here. There was an old sitcom called Cheers. And one of the sayings that came out of Cheers, where everybody knows your name. Well, going into Cup of Joe's, it has such a friendly environment, and such a welcoming environment. Everybody knows your name. And especially, if you're going to look at the positive side of things, the pandemic brought a lot of us together to get to know one another. We couldn't go inside. We're all standing around outside in the cold, and Peter's bringing out coffee. It was fantastic. We all got to know each other, know each other's names. We developed friendships. Such an amazing place. So, cheers to Cup of Joe's.
Cheers to Cup of Joe's. I like that. Thank you. And thank you, CBCA. That banner is beautiful. I'm going to move on to item number C. There is no action requested, but I want to recognize that it's African-American Black History Month this month. And it's also Rosa Parks's birthday today. And I just wanted to share one other trivia fact, and then I promise I'll move on. I was reading that Black History Month started in the month of February in honor of the birthdays of Frederick Douglass and Abraham Lincoln. So, that's why it's February. Just thought I'd share that. Anyway, thank you all for being here, and we'll move on to item number seven, city manager report.
Thank you, mayor. Members of council, just a few quick updates. Just a reminder, next Monday, February 10, right here in Hoyer Hall, is the budget and audit meeting. Last council meeting, city council approved several positions for city employment. Happy to announce that those were released two days after on our NeoGov platform, which facilitates and administers the recruitment process, and we have viable candidates for each one of those positions. Those positions close on February the 14th. If you're interested or want more information or want to share, please visit the city website. We were notified by East Bay Regional Park that they, as you know, they host a variety of events to celebrate various times during the year, and they are doing some special things this year for Black History Month, including a February 15 guided tour of Thurgood Marshall Park, Regional Park, excuse me, which is home of the Port Chicago 50. And for more information, please visit East Bay Park's website, and there are some other special activities going on this month as well. And finally, although he's been with us for four, about four weeks now, I wanted to introduce our community development, our interim community development director, Farhad Mortazavi. He works for CSG, but he's been working on a contract with us for the last four weeks, and I will turn it over to Farhad.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. Thank you for this opportunity. As the city manager indicated, I represent Community Services Group Consultants, is the multi, multi-passated community services provider, including engineering, planning, building, fire, and code enforcement. The company has over 30 years of experience providing services only for municipalities. And the planning division part of it includes planning, advanced planning, current planning, environmental planning, housing, and GIS. Just very, very briefly about myself, I've been in the field of community services and planning department for 27 years, and advanced planning, current planning, and I have planning-related undergrad and graduate degrees from California. And I've been providing services for Northern California for 25 years, and in private and in public sectors. And I'm looking forward to provide services for city of Clayton in current planning, meaning permit applications, and daily, weekly, monthly inquiries, special permits such as use permits, handling that and processing that, and bringing it in front of the planning commission or based on the recommendation in front of the city council. The long-range planning part of the city of Clayton, I would like to pay special attention to the housing element for its finalization and certification, and also the annual progress report to HCD, the state agency, and specifically the Silver Oaks, Silver Oaks State's subdivision, and Peacock Creek Town Homes Project, and other projects like. So, I'm looking forward to provide the services for the city as needed. Thank you.
Oh, Farhad, thank you so much. Nice meeting you, and welcome. I hear you're doing a terrific job. Does anybody have any questions for Farhad? No? Thank you. And that concludes item number seven. We'll move on to public hearings, of which there are none, and we'll move on to action items. And we're starting with action 9A, which is authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with UBS Financial Services for investment advisory services effective February 5, 2025, and update the city's investment policy. Regina, I believe this is you, our assistant city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, council members, Clayton community. Tonight, I have with me James Dill, who is our current representative with UBS Financial Services. He's going to be here to talk about the investment advisory services that they're offering to us, and we will also look at updating the city's investment policy. The Budget and Audit Committee has received a very similar presentation from Mr. Dill on January 13 of this year. And the short version is, the city is not seeing the full potential of all of its investment opportunities, which is why we are bringing this to you. This is an unbudgeted item, however, with the additional investment revenue, we believe that we will not only make that expense, but we will exceed the investment. So, James, I will let you take over from here, sir.
Hi, everybody. Hi, city council. Hi, mayor. Thank you for having me.
Hi, James.
Hi. Again, my name is James Dill. I've been at UBS for about 17 years, and we've had the privilege of actually working with you guys, the city of Clayton, for almost seven or eight years now. I'm going to share a few slides here with you and kind of walk you through what we're discussing here. So, like I said, we've worked with the city for the past number of years. We work with over 300 different institutional investors, municipalities, hospitals, financial institutions, helping them manage their investment portfolios. The way that we've had the account set up currently would be what was on a traditional brokerage agreement. It's non-discretionary. We provide options to the city, and then ultimately, the finance director makes the investment decisions. That's how the account has been set up originally. Last year, the city reached out to us asking about options for what would be considered an advisory agreement or fiduciary agreement, where the city would actually hire a portfolio manager to manage the day-to-day investments. The city would still be responsible for selecting the strategy, but the day-to-day handling of the investments would be handed to a portfolio manager, who would be managing the portfolio on what would be called the discretionary basis. So, this would be considered an advisory solution, getting unbiased advice based on a fiduciary relationship directed with the portfolio manager, based on the Investment Advisory Act of 1940. It sets aside all of the fiduciary obligations of actually hiring a portfolio manager. We would still provide all of the comprehensive reporting, the risk management, the monthly reviews. We would work closely with the finance group at the city to determine any liquidity needs or investment goals. It's really a collaborative approach, very similar to what we've already been doing. But the city would be able to spend less time on the management of the investment portfolio. We would be able to take on more of the day-to-day, and obviously, the city would have more time to continue to grow all of the things that the city does. The program that we're talking about is called ACCESS here at UBS. It provides access, coincidentally enough, to a variety of investment programs and solutions that we can offer. So, there's fixed income solutions, there's equity solutions, there's corporate bond strategies, municipal bond strategies, treasury strategies. So, the program offers investors with access to a variety of portfolio managers within UBS, outside of UBS, really bringing kind of best-of-breed for whatever solution an institution is looking for. We do ongoing due diligence on all of these managers based on performance and style, based on kind of organizationally how they're set up. And then within this ACCESS program, we can pick different solutions that make sense. In this case, well, just a little bit more on the advisory benefits. So, actually, using a portfolio manager, obviously, you're getting what would be considered institutional execution. You're getting institutional pricing. So, we would assume price improvements based on the pricing power of using an institutional portfolio manager. We just kind of ran some estimated numbers based on prior investments that were made, and how the price improvement could be expected based on getting institutional pricing. The other issue that we've had for a number of years is at times cash has just sat idle. So, like we said, right now, the account is set up where it's not discretionary. So, UBS or portfolio manager, we can't make decisions until the city decides what they would like to do for investments. So, it's led to many days where cash kind of sits idle when we're waiting to maybe hear back from the city. There might be an investment that matured that sits idle, and that's kind of lost opportunity cost. So, again, these are kind of two, again, major benefits of an advisory relationship, the institutional execution, and the ongoing day-to-day portfolio management. The strategy that we have discussed right now, this is one of many strategies, but the one that we decided to start with would be UBS Short Duration Treasury Portfolio, 100% US Treasuries. The duration of the portfolio, the kind of average maturity is about a year. The maximum maturity of any investment is three years. So, anywhere from zero months to three years is kind of the duration of the portfolio. Again, the average is about one year. The current yield is probably about a month old, but is about 4.28. These are all government guaranteed securities, and this would be kind of the recommended strategy to start with. Obviously, there's other strategies that could be considered, but right now, this one would be exclusively US Treasuries with a maximum three-year maturity. There's some more information just on the portfolio strategy, and looking at kind of the transition to setting up an advisory relationship from how we have it set up as a brokerage relationship to an advisory relationship. The current portfolio size is about 12.1 million. The transition would require getting out of some lower-yielding investments. Right now, the current yield of the portfolio is about 2.73. There would be some paper penalties or losses on getting out of some of those investments early, but moving to a new projected yield of 4.28 over the next 12 months, we would see a significant income or additional income from making these changes now. So, that would be the transition for the, going from the brokerage relationship to the advisory relationship. And the fee schedule, as we had discussed with the Budget and Audit Committee, all-inclusive, one fixed asset management fee, based on the assets that are managed. There's no transition, there's no transaction cost, there's no commissions, there's no sales charges. There's one advisory relationship, or there's one advisory fee that the municipality would pay directly to UBS of .30 or 30 basis points. This is billed quarterly and then calculated on an average daily balance. So, the average balance of the portfolio on a daily basis is calculated for an annual advisory fee of 30 basis points. We've discussed already what we would need to do to kind of get the investment policy current with what this recommendation would provide. So, obviously, updating the investment policy, setting the portfolio allocation and investment guidelines, which would be the recommended strategy, the one, zero to three-year US Treasuries. That allocation would be agreed upon, and then those guidelines would be agreed upon as well. And then we would do monthly reviews with the city council finance team to make sure that if there's any changes that we need to consider for the duration of the portfolio, for any liquidity needs that the city may have, and then any maybe potential changes that we may want to think about or consider in terms of different opportunities that may be available in any given market at a given time. So, we would do a monthly review call with the city, the city finance team. We would do a semi-annual review call with the budget committee, and then we would do an annual review with this city council. And I will stop sharing and pause there.
Okay. Thank you, James. That was terrific. What questions do we have for James or the staff? No questions?
I just have a clarifying question from the packet. The recommendation, it reads that the fees are 20 basis points, but you just mentioned 30 basis points in the presentation.
Council member told me that's a type of graphical error. I apologize. I just saw that this evening myself.
Okay.
Any other questions? If not, I'll open it up for public comment. Mr. Gavidia, you look like you're making your way to the podium. Go ahead.
Good evening, council. I'm on the finance committee, or what is it, the financial sustainability committee. I happen to do, I happen to be a registered investment advisor, but I'm I happen to be a registered investment advisor, but I'm speaking as a citizen, not as... This is the right thing to do, without a doubt. Your pricing, the pricing that UBS is putting out here, I'm actually surprised at how good it is. I don't price it out for my clients like this. You're going to a fiduciary relationship, that's a big deal, institutional trading, and then no idle money. The staff has enough to do. If you want your own private money manager, you're going to have to pay a quarter million dollars to hire one. In addition, I've done my own homework on James. His record is clean on broker check. UBS is a very good institution, and I just think this is an easy vote for you guys. It should have been done a long time ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gavidia. Any other public comment on this item? No? If not, I will close this, bring it back to the Council. Any final comments?
I would just say, you know, you and I have both seen the presentation prior, so it wasn't a surprise, but I like hearing it again. There's a few things that were really persuasive to me. Not having idle daily cash is pretty important, but even more so the reduction of staff time, I think, is also really valuable. It's hard to quantify that. And then, you know, transitioning to higher-yield products and able to move our portfolio to something that would perform better, I think it was really compelling, so that was it.
Okay, thank you. And if there's nothing else, then I guess our action item here is to execute the agreement with UBS.
That's correct, Madam Mayor. It would be to execute the agreement and to update the investment policy.
Correct.
And then we can move forward with the next steps.
Do I have a motion?
Well, the updated investment policy, is that the one that was in the?
I believe it was updated on Monday. It should have been Section 10, I believe.
Okay, yeah, it's highlighted in the packet.
Yes, it is.
Okay, I move approval.
Okay, a second?
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Tillman, a second. Can we have a vote?
Certainly. On that motion, Councilmember Diaz.
Yes.
Aneah.
Yes.
Tillman.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Juan.
Aye.
Mayor Trupiano.
Yes.
Thank you. You have five ayes.
Thank you. Okay, we are now moving on to Action Item 9B. Thank you, James.
Thank you all. Thanks.
I know he's in New Jersey. Everybody's in New Jersey tonight, or coming from New Jersey, or... It's the Jersey connection, I call it. But thank you. I know it's late there. Item 9B is adopt a resolution appointing one individual to the Planning Commission for an unexpired two-year term expiring June 30th, 2026. Do you have anything more to add?
No, you covered it. I just clarified that it's an unexpired term because we had a planning commissioner.
Microphone, yeah.
Yes, I should know this, but just to clarify that the unfinished term was due to Councilmember Aneah being promoted to the City Council from planning, and it's still the same term. We wouldn't have started anyone.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
So the term ends June 26th, is that correct?
That is correct. It is the original term date.
Okay, if not, I'll open it up to public comment. Is there anyone who would like to comment on this before we make our decision? No? Okay, bring it back to the Council. Do we have any other additional comments before we decide who our candidate, chosen candidate will be? Nope? So are we just going to?
Okay. You'll just select the candidate you would like to appoint?
Okay. Does anybody want to start? Councilmember Aneah, would you like to start? Somebody has to start.
I'll start. I would start. As a former planning commissioner, I was very interested in all three candidates, and they all made very good points. I was particularly interested in Mr. Brozovic, is that how you pronounce it? Statements, when he talked about the general plan, the municipal code, and the state laws, and balancing growth and businesses, that was one major point that got to me. And also about the importance to hear all sides in an issue, but then you have to follow our regulations and rules and our laws. And he was absolutely correct when he said that over the next couple of years on that question about what does he see, it's federal and state laws coming or changing. Because I truly believe that's going to happen very rapidly, and it will affect every city. And it's really important to follow that and be up to date on it. And, you know, there hasn't been a lot going on in Clayton for the last seven months. We haven't had a planning commission meeting in seven months. People have put in for what they want to do, and no planning, no building permits have been issued, even though we've approved them when I was on the planning commission. Also, the state housing element should be approved very shortly. We've met our goals about the number of lots that have to be approved. Yeah, I'm knocking on wood too for that. But the planning commission hopefully will start meeting again now that we have a contract planner that's going to help us. And also, last meeting, we approved that new position of actually changing the name to a senior planner instead of a community development director. But I'm impressed by Mr. Brozovic's responses.
Thank you, Councilmember Aneah. Anyone else? Who's next?
Well, I just want to, you know, putting yourself out there and applying for a position is always... It takes a lot, so I want to thank all the candidates, I think. Anyone who steps up to serve is to be commended, so... And I know that I think for at least two of the candidates, they've done it before, so they decided to do it twice, both Ms. Archangel and Mr....
Brozovic.
Broz... I'm going to mispronounce that name, so I apologize. But, you know, the service that Mr. Schmidt expressed in his background, I thought was also like highly commendable. I think it takes a lot to serve and to continue to serve, so I really appreciate that. I too appreciated Mr. Brozovic's comments on the applicability of rule-following, and then also his really emphasis on, you know, listening. I thought that was, you know, pretty important. Not that anyone wouldn't listen, but I just, I appreciated that he called that out, so.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Tillman or Diaz, would you like to go next?
I want to first thank all of the three candidates that submitted their names for this position, with Councilmember Aneah and I being the only ones, I believe, that actually came through the planning commission. Anyway, it's a very important role in the city, and people really need to understand that. Taking time to go through all of the various materials that you get and receive and making sure that everything is adequately addressed and that you look over the landscape and making sure that it's in compliance with the general plan and so forth, it is a very important role played in the community, and the City Council relies very heavily on the recommendations that come from the planning commission. All in all, the three candidates, I thought, did a pretty reasonably good job in communicating their skill sets and what they would bring to the position. And I'm still thinking over which of the three, in my mind, stood out as what I would select as my recommended candidate. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Tillman?
I would concur with Councilmember Diaz in that I think all of you, all three of you, I think she might have left. I appreciate all of you guys coming here, putting yourself out there, wanting to volunteer, because it is not easy. And hearing some of the responses, I think all of you, all three candidates or applicants, hit on a lot of things that I liked. For example, understanding the ordinances, the policies and objectives, et cetera, of the Council. I think that was what Mr. Schmidt shared, that I took notes on. Really honing in on the general plan and the zoning and the laws is what Mr. Brozovic brought to us. And then Ms. Archangel bringing in really listening and making sure that all residents had a voice. I think that came across from all of you, but she really made sure that there was balance with that. And I really liked her keeping Clayton like it is and keeping the humanity and realizing that we all have a voice, but also balancing that with building out our downtown. So I haven't made a decision yet either, even though we did this interview an hour and a half ago. That's where I'm at.
Okay, well, I'm going to share my insight, and then we will need to get to a decision, right, tonight? And again, I want to thank all of you. It is very difficult to put yourself out there, and you're actually being interviewed as people are walking into the room. It takes a lot of guts to do that, and this is a very important role. I want to thank Nate and Natalie for applying again the second time, and Charlie Schmidt for first time. I think everybody brings something very unique to the table, and, but I have to say, I too am leaning more towards Nate Brozovic. I like what he was talking about when he was talking about economic growth and vitality. He talked about growth in terms of preservation as well, thinking of the city's long-term needs. I know we haven't had a lot of meetings in the last seven months, but it sounds like we're going to have some pressing issues this year. I like that he said differing viewpoints enrich the discussion and the end result, making sure that the planning commission is aligned with the community and, you know, residents' needs. I like that he was talking about future zoning changes and, you know... Mr. Schmidt, I so admire your leadership qualities and your volunteering in the community and your bird-watching skills. But I think I, myself, am also leaning towards Nate Brozovic for this position. So Councilmember Tillman, Diaz, do you want to add anything more to this discussion?
I don't have further, I don't have anything further. Thank you.
I don't disagree. I think for me, if I had to rank them, I think that Mr. Brozovic and Mr. Schmidt were my number ones, very closely together, followed by Ms. Archangel. But I have to commend Mr. Schmidt for still being in the room. So I think that he just went a tick up for me.
Well, the other candidate was on Zoom. I don't know if he's still, I think he's back east also. Everybody's in New Jersey, so it's a Jersey connection, I'm telling you, right? We do need to make a decision, though, correct?
I think I would also support Mr. Brozovic as well. I especially just want to call out Mr. Schmidt's service. I just think it's tremendous. So I didn't want that to go unsaid, but at the same time, I think I would concur with you, Mayor.
Okay, so if we have three votes for one candidate, then I will make a motion that we are going to select Nate Brozovic as our next planning commissioner effective the next planning commission meeting, which we think is going to be in February, correct? Through June 2026 is his term. Do I have a second?
I'd second that.
And Mayor, if we can take public comment before you vote?
On that motion, Councilmember Diaz.
Councilmember Diaz would have liked to have heard more explanation on educational and specialized training. But even though it did not come through after three questions, I will support it. Thank you.
I'll take that as an aye. Councilmember Aneah?
Yes.
Tillman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Juan.
I would just say that this is the second time for Mr. Brozovic, so maybe the second time is the next opening, but I will also be an aye.
Thank you. Mayor Trupiano?
Aye.
Thank you. You have five ayes.
Thank you. Okay, we have a candidate, and thank you to all the candidates tonight.
Moving to Item 9C, which is create and appoint two City Council members to an ad hoc committee to facilitate a governance training workshop. City Manager, I don't know if you, I do have something I want to say before we get into comments, but feel free to open it up.
Sure, this is, excuse me, this is an opportunity to kind of build from the council, learn better how we work together, both as a council, the five members together, and council and staff together. We all want the same thing, and that's to take Clayton where this council wants to go and create those opportunities, and to provide this community with the essential services and their response, and the community that they, you've heard tonight, that they are very proud of. And we want to not only sustain that, but improve that, and this is a way forward to do that. I am in the process of meeting with several different firms. That would be a third party that would come in and facilitate this. I'll work with the ad hoc when we get those proposals in from the firms. You'll look at it, and it'll be kind of like an a la carte menu of what the desires from the ad hoc want to bring to this training, and selecting the firms based on not only price, but what they provide and what matches and aligns with the goals that this ad hoc is going to put forward.
Thank you, and I just have a brief statement, because I know this has been part of kind of an ongoing agenda request. And so I just want to address it in my own words. As I said in December, when I first became your mayor, one of my top priorities this year was to help heal the divide in our city. With that in mind, one of the first things that I did was to reach out to Councilmember Tillman and set up a meeting to discuss her long-requested agenda item. And I'm happy to report that we had a very constructive meeting on January 28th with our city manager and city attorney. And we determined that the best course of action for our city, our council, and our community was to create a two-person ad hoc committee. I'm recommending this evening that it's Councilmember Tillman and myself on that committee, and to work with our city manager to select a facilitator to conduct this workshop in good governance training with the entire council for the purpose of providing ourselves with the additional tools and resources we need to move the city forward. I also want to say, as referenced earlier, we are not moving forward with an investigation. And we are on the course to a new chapter in our city's history. We're here to improve ourselves as your representatives, continue to be supportive of the city staff, and to provide you, our constituents, with the best representation as your elected officials. I'm hopeful that our city manager will provide the ad hoc committee with some great choices at a cost that we can agree is reasonable in order to provide us with the additional tools to make us a stronger, more resilient council. My slogan in December was "Stronger Together," and I still believe that. And I'm hopeful that our current city staff feels supported, that the candidates that are applying for these five open positions see our city as a desirable place to work and make a difference, and that our community supports the council as we work to improve our relationship with one another, the staff, and all of you. And so, Councilmember Tillman, I hope it's you and I on this committee, but it's open for questions, and then we'll take public comment. No questions?
I don't have any questions. I'll wait till discussion.
Okay.
Mr. City Manager, you mentioned something about investigating and looking into some firms to assist. What are they going to do and how much you right now estimate that cost to be?
So they'll be the facilitator and the designer of the program to go through the day, whether it's four hours, six hours, that's going to be up to the ad hoc in this council of what the actual process looks like. I don't have an idea of a number quite yet. The first firm that I met with is supposed to get me a proposal by this Friday. I'll be attending the city manager's conference this week where there will be a plethora of these agencies, and so I'll have one-off conversations with those groups so that I'll bring you several different companies that do it in a different way so the ad hoc can look at all of them comprehensively.
And are we assured that we will agree with this firm or whatever, not just by the committee, but the full council, that it's going to be issue-based?
Yes. You, so basically what they'll do is put an overarching day together, but the topics that you want to focus on will be part of what they're going to focus.
So we're going to get queried first?
Absolutely, yes.
All right.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I'm going to open it up to public comment then. Is there anyone who wants to address us? No? Okay. Mr. Walcott, you have three minutes.
Good evening, council, and congratulations, Mayor, on your elevation to mayor. You won't be saying that in about three or four months because it's really a tough job. And to you, Vice Mayor Juan, back again as the vice mayor. Thank you for your leadership. And I really appreciate your leadership on this issue. It's been going on for 15 months and, you know, I'm glad that we can put this behind us and move on and try to bring the city together. I know Clayton Watts, we've been trying to do it for the last two or three months to bring the city back together, so I appreciate that. As far as the team building session goes, I think it's team building and good governance. And the city council, I went through that so many times and it works if the council, all the council is willing to give a little and be willing to cooperate and solve the problems. If they're not willing to do that, it's not going to work. And I assume that it's going to be part team building and part a good governance. That's what I'm assuming that's what it's going to be. And if it is, and all the council members are willing to participate and for the good of the whole community, it will work. It's pretty simple on team building. Y'all have different opinions, which is good. We want that. You don't have to like each other. You just have to be respectful and get along when you're representing us up here on the council. You have to be respectful to the city staff and you have to be respectful to the public. You know, and I, back in December, there was an issue with one council member, and I'm not going to single them out, where the council member was disrespectful to the public. That's not appropriate. You know, your job is to be respectful for everybody. And as long as that's the goal here, is to learn how to get along with each other, not that you have to agree, you don't have to go Christmas parties with each other, but you need to agree and you need to be respectful for each other in your comments, which hasn't happened, and the staff, both sides here and the public. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Walcott. Anyone else? Okay, then I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the council for comments. Councilmember Diaz?
Nope.
Oh.
So just to clarify, so given this was kind of the outcome of your meeting that you had requested, does this satisfy your prior agenda request, Councilmember Tillman? Or I just wanted to clarify.
That's the goal, yes.
Okay, so the, because I think that you had requested a few different items over time. And if this is the outcome of that, then and this satisfies your request, that's what I wanted to understand.
It does. That's what I was going to thank the mayor for doing. She did reach out. I did question and ask how come she didn't as vice mayor, but I'm glad she did as the mayor. And I think by having this governance session that we're going to have and shaping it the way that we need to, I think it will eventually address all of the issues that I brought up. I think that's the goal, is for us to work together. I think I said that in March of 2023, when we had our first goal-setting session, is that we needed to actually work better together. And I think this puts us on that track to do that, yes. And as Councilmember Diaz asked, is will we all have a say on how that session is shaped? Yes, we will. That's the goal. But I think this ad hoc committee that she is recommending that we're both a part of will be, we're not going to vet the companies, that's what Chris is going to do, but we will be able to bring recommendations to the full council on how that session looks.
Thank you, Councilmember Tillman. Anybody else? Any other comments? No? Then, oh, go ahead.
Just one other one. I think you had mentioned something like a, you threw out a couple ideas on what it could, what the shape could be. I know it's not set. Just being cognizant that we all have pretty busy schedules, I think, like we work for a living. So I would just keep that in mind as we look to shape whatever form this takes, just because it may be difficult to get that block of time. Thank you.
As we get through this process, we will look at schedules, time commitments, how much time you want to commit to this activity, days, and try to be as flexible and as accommodating as possible.
Great, thank you. Do I have a motion? Anyone want to make a motion?
I would move that the ad hoc committee get formed with Mayor Trupiano and Councilmember Tillman, as described in the packet.
Okay.
I second.
Okay, roll call.
Thank you. Councilmember Diaz?
Yes.
Aneah?
Yes.
Tillman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Juan?
Aye.
Mayor Trupiano?
Aye.
Thank you. You have five ayes.
Thank you. That's great. We're on a roll. And let's go to item 9D, which is authorize the city manager to negotiate with Three Put Development LLC for potential sale of city property located at APN apostrophe S. Do I have to read the whole thing? No. Yeah, like, oh. City manager, would you please kick us off on that?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Just a little bit of background. The two parcels that we're discussing tonight are immediately located east of a currently held property by Three Put LLC. It is at the southeast corner of Clayton Road and Peacock Drive. It is a space of five total acres with 3.4 or 5 acres of usable space. It's important to note that this property is located in the GAB, but that has no effect on approval or nor approval. It's just for information. I wanted to make that clear. The property in question, these two parcels do not have any fronted street access. They sit about 40 or 50 feet behind the curb and gutter, so there is no direct road that connects those properties to Clayton Road. The access point is through the adjacent property, which, as I mentioned, is currently held by Three Put. So a little background, and this is also in your packet. At the May 7th council meeting, authorization was provided to declare the parcels surplus land on May 20th, 2024. Council passed a resolution declaring the subject property to be surplus land and notices were sent out, which required a 60-day period, and no affordable housing developer showed interest in the property. On December 20th, our final documentation was sent to HCD asking for approval, and we were notified on January 15th from HCD that we had met all requirements for the Surplus Land Act and that we could be, we could move forward as everything had been fulfilled. The authorization would allow the city manager to enter into negotiations for the sale of the property to Three Put Development, given that there is no legal access to the property other than through his currently held property. It's also of interest for the city's property development as it would help address some of the housing issues currently we're dealing with with HCD, so it would provide more inventory of housing here in Clayton. If council is interested in negotiating the terms, we will be adjourning to a closed session to discuss what council's direction and what the terms of that would look like, and that'll happen this evening directly after the close of this meeting, the close of open session meeting, sorry. And with that, I'll turn it over to you, Madam Mayor, for clarifying questions or the like.
Okay, thank you, City Manager, Chris. Any questions for Chris on this? Chris on this? There you go. I like that. No questions? Then I will open it up for public comment. Is there anybody who would like to speak on this issue? No? Okay. Then I'll bring it back to the council. Comments?
It took a little bit of time to get here because of various administrative hurdles, but we are here, so I'm glad for it. So thank you for all your work on bringing this forward. I think this is consistent with what we discussed back when we, I don't remember how far back it was. You just mentioned it and I already, yeah. So that's great, and I'm glad to see this moving forward.
I concur. I concur. This is good.
Maybe a little bit before May of 2024, because on the planning commission, we looked, that's one of the several lots that we looked at to comply with our state-mandated HCD housing. And this will go a long way to doing that. And I'm glad that we're finally near an end stage so that they can start construction and developing it. I know. I said if.
Concurd.
Terrific. Do I have a motion?
I would move it.
I'll second.
Okay.
We could take our own vote.
Vice Mayor Juan?
Moved to.
Moved. Councilmember Tillman seconded.
Thank you.
Just need a.
Councilmember Diaz?
Yes.
Aneah?
Yes.
Tillman?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Juan?
Aye.
Mayor Trupiano?
Aye.
Thank you. You have five ayes.
Oh, we did it again. Five ayes. I love it. And now we are going to, I see Larry Thies, our city engineer, moving to the podium. Yeah, we're good. Let's just take a five-minute break right here. Sorry, Larry. Just need five.
Recording stopped.
Okay.
Recording in progress.
Welcome back. And now, we are going to go to item 9E and talk about review and potentially select a restriping alternative for Mount Air Parkway between Marsh Creek Road and Mount Air Circle from four lanes to two lanes. And our city engineer is going to kick this one off, Larry Thies.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. This is an item that you've previously discussed in May of last year. Just to give context, and not all of the members, obviously, were on the council time, but the council gave direction to staff to essentially do a semi-permanent or a temporary striping after our paving project that we had last October to accommodate, or better accommodate, a potential restriping in the future. And so, that's what has occurred. So, to give sort of the background, since that point, we have included in the capital improvement plan, a Mount Air Parkway restriping project. So, there is a project in the CIP that was approved in June of last year. And then, we utilize a traffic engineer, AMG, to prepare alternatives at looking at the existing pavement width, which is generally 64 feet wide from curb to curb, for the segment of Mount Air Parkway between Marsh Creek Road up south to Mount Air Circle at the pool or the clubhouse for that segment. The initial discussion was to look at a lane reduction or a road diet to change the existing four lanes into two lanes, or one lane in each direction. But given the existing width, there's different alternatives that could be considered. So, we are asking the council to review the alternatives. First, discuss, I guess, if you would like to implement any changes. And then, if you would like to implement a change, which of the alternatives that you would like to select. City staff is recommending Alternative 2, which is part of the packet. Generally speaking, it utilizes one lane in each direction, has a two-way left turn, center median, and a bike lane, and on-street parking. So, that's, we felt, was the most balanced of the alternatives. The main reduction would be the traffic lanes, no impacts to street parking, and it still allows for vehicles who would like to turn left into their driveways, essentially, to be able to exit out of the through lane into a center turn pocket, essentially, to then wait, if there's oncoming traffic, to make their left. The other two alternatives that were included, both of which have one lane in each direction, Alternative 1 does not have the center turn median. So, that's the main difference. So, the one lane in each direction are right next to each other with a double yellow. That alternative would allow for more space, because you're not having the center median. So, that alternative has bike lanes, a buffer zone between the travel through lane of cars, and then a buffer zone and a bike lane, and then on-street parking. I would say that alternative actually may slow traffic even more, because the, as I mentioned earlier, the vehicles who want to make a left into their driveways will be forced to wait in the through lane, and cars will naturally have to back up behind it. The third alternative that was included has a center turn median, and essentially has the same elements as the recommended alternative, except it has no on-street parking, and it adds a buffer zone. That would be more impactful, certainly, obviously, to the fronting property owners. It was looked at. It does provide increased bicycle safety, because you're providing a buffer zone. That's the main difference. But given the number of homes along this stretch, which we estimated last time, I think in around the 50 fronting homes, it would be pretty impactful to have no parking from your house. So, we felt that alternative wasn't as viable as the second alternative of still allowing parking. I would say, all these alternatives, you could consider some element of changing one or out. You know, if you would like to add additional buffer bike zones, you could reduce some width and maybe add an element of like a three-to-four-foot-wide buffer zone. That cost would increase a bit, because you're adding more striping. Essentially, this project and the recommended alternative is estimated around $244,000. That is up from what's in the CIP. Part of that is, when we estimated it back in May, we didn't have bids yet. So, now, we have bids from this last summer, and I was able to use those numbers to build the current estimate. They are higher than we expected back in May. So, that way, that cost is roughly, I would say, $80,000 more. But the estimate with the $244,000 does include a 20% contingency, so there is some buffer left in that. And the council did approve a grant application at its last meeting for essentially the recommended alternative. And if we are successful in getting that grant, that would add about $50,000, potentially, to the budget, and would reduce the city's cost toward the overall project. The big cost associated with it is, basically, you're going to resurface the road that you just surfaced last year. It's not, obviously, needed up from a maintenance standpoint, but in order to properly restripe this segment, you can't just simply grind out the existing paint. It's probably just as expensive to grind it out, and it would look much worse. So, it's better to resurface it with a slurry seal, and then to put thermoplastic striping this time, which is a much more permanent and has more retroreflectivity for nighttime driving than what's currently out there today. Back in May, when we had this discussion, we are aware that, you know, this is an impact, primarily to the Dana Hills neighborhood. And so, we did receive feedback at the council meeting. And subsequently, we've notified through the HOA's mailing list that this item was going to come back up tonight. So, hopefully, there's feedback from any members of the community, or specifically that neighborhood, who would have more concerns. I would say, in general, this is just a restriping project. So, there's no hardscape elements included, no adding of concrete medians, or adding different elements, strictly restriping. The width of the road physically will stay the same. So, cars could still drive across the paint, right? Nothing's physically going to stop them. But I believe the intention is, by having one lane in each direction, that cars will feel it's visually narrowed, and that they would slow down than the current situation. The posted speed limit there is 30 miles an hour. I do think, overall, it could have some impact, but I don't I would say, from my perspective, it won't be a huge impact as if you were doing a physically narrowing project. So, I think it's a step in a traffic calming improvement with probably the minimal amount of cost as you can do for changing this type of road from four to two lanes. Overall, it's not a project that, from an engineering perspective, is required. I think it is really a community-based type of decision of how they'd like to proceed in the neighborhood, and address potentially speeding and those elements. So, I, just to be clear, it wasn't a engineering-specific recommendation that this should be done. It's a matter of addressing what was requested. I would be happy to take any questions, and then, obviously, hear for feedback and be able to provide any additional information that the council would like.
Okay, thank you, Larry. What questions do we have? Anybody? Councilmember Tillman?
Yes, thank you, Larry. For the restriping that we just did, was it last summer, so six-ish months ago, I guess, maybe?
Technically, I think the road was repaved or resurfaced in October of last year, so the striping was probably done the very end of October, so roughly November, December, January. So, maybe three-plus months
Okay.
It's been out there.
How long does that last? I think you said temporary paint last time in May, you said maybe two years? Was it two years you said?
Generally speaking, I would say it would be fine for a couple of years, no problem. It's obviously somewhat dependent on the use out there, but the traffic isn't very heavy on that particular road, so I don't anticipate any unusual patterns out there. So, would I be comfortable waiting for a typical resurfacing timeframe? Yes, I wouldn't have any problem saying that paint can probably last till when you should normally resurface a road every, like, five years or so. So, and if it doesn't last, you could obviously just refresh the paint.
So, that was going to be my question, is if we were to move forward with this, when would this happen? And I know we put in for the grant, hoping to get that. When would this start?
So, this would be a capital improvement project, so we technically have to put bid documents together. It's a relatively very simple project. We already have the base plans, everything. I think we could I would suggest that we do an amendment to the CIP, so it's before June, so that way, we're all clear on the budget, that we would initiate the design, and that we would advertise probably in May-June timeframe. And that way, the actual work can ideally be done before August, when school is still out. I don't think the traffic is terribly impacted by the schools, but it would it'd be ideal to do it when there's the least amount of traffic, obviously. And the project would be done, so finalized and everything, probably September. It would line up if the city was able to get the grant. Usually, the grant authorization by MTC is in August. So, if that does run a little late, you may want you'd have to wait, because you can't incur the cost prior to the allocation. So, that could be one reason why everything else could be ready, but you're still waiting on that grant. You'll know if the money's already been going to be allocated, it's just a matter of it got it has to go through the steps of first, it goes to the mayor's conference, then it goes to the board of supervisors, then it goes to the MTC commission. So, and that usually happens in August.
Okay. Other questions for Larry? No other questions? Okay. Larry, and I think the only two questions that I asked you, some of which were in the last meeting, but the cost, whether it's Alternative 1, 2, or 3, the costs are all relatively about the same. Is that correct?
Yes. I would say, any alternative that has physically more paint on the ground is just going to cost a little more. So, the buffer zone alternatives probably be a little bit higher, because you're putting a lot of crosshatching in. But relatively speaking, we're probably not talking more than like 10% of the overall budget for that type of change.
Okay. And then, the other question that I asked at the last meeting, just to, you know, is this a priority project? Do we, you know, using that gas tax money, is there something else that's more pressing in the city? If we do this, that means we're not doing something else? Maybe a road that's more well-traveled? And
Yes, you're using gas tax, road-related funds, so essentially, it's an opportunity cost that you're making a decision on, that you would like to restripe this road. I mean, that's primarily what you're doing, because you've already surface-treated it, versus probably doing a resurfacing on a different route, or, you know, you could use that money, obviously, to repave a road. So, essentially, it is where you'd like to utilize those road funds for, and the importance, sort of, the traffic calming element is to this particular project versus a road repaving project.
Thank you. Okay.
I have one more. Oh, you go ahead. Sorry. I know we just had this a couple of weeks ago, but it's been a long couple of weeks. Remind me the timing of that grant that we applied for?
Sure.
And when we would find out and get the funding for that?
So, the grant application was submitted last week. It was due by January 30th. So, that is currently with the county. The selection process, or the review, is usually done in end of February. And we would have a preliminary recommendation of what projects are going to be funded by usually that end of that meeting. So, by the end of February, you would know if you're going to get any money, and potentially how much. Now, also recognizing if the council chooses not to go forward with this project, what I would recommend is that you give me a direction to withdraw that application, and then before it gets reviewed. And we could do that. That would probably that decision's probably going to be made tonight, so that's why I don't think you'll have any timing impacts for that decision, since it just went in last week.
Okay. And it's still the same timeline, then, that we're talking about the mayor's conference, going through the board of supervisors, MTC? So, it's still, regardless whether we if we didn't get the funding, and we still want to move forward, we can do it at any time. But if we're if we are dependent on this funding from the grant, and we want it to move forward, the timing would still be in September or August?
Yes. So, to provide more context, I think, yeah, the mayor's conference usually is in April, May, and then, board of supervisors is in June, July, and then August, and then MTC. It does, if you're awarded funds, the earliest you would be able to get it used or reimbursed would be August of this year. But it has a three-year window.
Okay.
So, you could you could choose to wait longer to pave the road and sort of get more benefit out of the paint for another year, if you'd like, and still be able to use that grant fund. So, that is a great question. I would say, another thing that springs to my head is, we are we are not scheduled to do a paving project this year. I'm going to be coming to the council with a street list that I would recommend that the council will approve and provide feedback, and that the intention would be to pave that in 2026. You could
Pave what in 2026?
Pave those selected streets.
Thank you.
So, that item hasn't obviously come before you. It's going to come probably in a month, when we get our latest bi-annual road report. That is another option. You could package that, this road, back into the overall 2026, and potentially save some money, because now you've you're not doing two-bid process, and but you are going to wait a year, obviously, to do that. So, that is another element, just providing options. If you choose to want to pursue this project, then it's just a matter of timing.
And then, just to reiterate from our last meeting, where we agreed to move forward with the grant, the alternative that we used was not there were no barriers for the cars. I forget what the term was that you used, but it's the they can still park on the street, there's a buffer zone, and then there was the bike lane. Meaning, emergency vehicles can drive wherever they need to, except for the cars that are parked on the street. There's clearly lanes that they can drive on, because there's nothing there that's stopping a car from moving forward.
Correct. So, one of the alternatives we discussed the last meeting relative to the grant was looking at what was called a Class 4 bike lane, which has a physical barrier. And we were only looking at that segment from Marsh Creek Road to the first intersection of Mount Air Circle, not the entirety, because obviously, there's driveways beyond that. Based on the feedback from the council, and understand that there's a fair amount of on-street parking there utilized, because, I believe, is school. That element has been removed, so the updated alternative you see in Alternative 2 addresses that. It puts the on-street parking back at that situation. The other two alternatives, I didn't have enough time with the subconsultant to switch those out, but the intention would be the same to to basically have, in that segment, still a through lane, a just a painted buffer, and still have on-street parking.
Okay. Thank you.
And I have a follow-up question to that, Larry. So, if we do get approved for the grant, but we decide to wait and package this up with our other paving projects in 2026, we have how long to use the grant? Three years?
Three years from when it's allocated. So, generally, it would be August of 2028.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, I'm going to open it up for public comment. I have several comment cards here. The first is Tom Brazil. You'll have three minutes. And just, and the mic is on already, or? Oh, there we go.
Usually, I don't need a mic. Now, speaking as the only Jersey boy actually in the room, so so, I addressed the council last time. My wife, Christine, and I have lived here for upwards of 37 years, all in Dana Ridge and Dana Hills, 20, the last 24 in Dana Hills, up in Mount Sequoia. We've raised two children here. By the way, I no disrespect By the way, I, no disrespect, madam mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, council members, city management, madam clerk, I appreciate the time to talk. I, I'm struggling with why we're looking at doing this and spending close to $300,000 on something that doesn't need to be done. I'd much rather see that money pave the street beyond, continue up Mount Air. I'm, it, so that we go all the way to the top, because that's in significant disrepair. The bottom now has been nicely repaved. We got a little taste of what one lane looks like when the paving was being done, and there were four and five cars deep waiting to turn. We don't need to do that. We've not had any issues over all these years we've lived here. And brought, brought up two children riding bicycles, the whole thing. Not an issue. Respectfully differ on the impact on cars and traffic and parking around May. We do have a 250-member swim team that most weekends either has practices or meets, and the cars up and down the street are packed. So it would have a significant issue there. Street looks great right now. I don't understand why we are using this money to fix something. We used to use the term, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. It's not broke. It doesn't need fixing. We, we have plenty of other things in Clayton to use that kind of money on. And having been here for a long time, I don't see, this is the first time we've really done any repair for quite a long time, and it looks great, even at night. We see the reflectors now, which we haven't had before, which is great. So, why do we need to move forward on spending that kind of money, when you can easily, no, not easily, but redefine how that money is going to be used down the road? And perhaps finish out all the paving all the way up Mount Air. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Brazil. See, there's a Jersey connection tonight, I'm just saying. That's where I'm from. Christine Brazil, next. You will have three minutes. Oh, Brassel. Sorry. Brassel.
Thank you very much for letting me take this time. Kind of ditto to what he said. But the only other thing I wanted to mention was, I do not, definitely don't even see a point to bike lanes coming down Mount Air Parkway. Because, first of all, people riding bikes, adults and children, they don't follow the rules of the road in Clayton. A lot of them don't even stop at the stop signs. And I feel like you put, you put a bike lane in there, it's almost more like a accident waiting to happen for someone trying to pull out, because, you know, kids, you know, hey, I'm in a bike lane, and they don't pay attention to what's going on. So, I feel that would almost be detrimental in that space. And also, just wanted to reiterate what he said about, we, you need the parking going up and down the street for the school, for the swim team, for people. A lot of residents use street parking. They don't all just, you know, have room in their garage, or park in their driveway, or whatever. So, those are just things I would like to mention. And request also that there are probably a lot of other roads, like Tom said, the top, we live on the top half of Dana, of Mount Air Parkway. It hasn't been repaired. So, perhaps that could be it, or a lot of other roads here in Clayton. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. And then, next speaker is Nancy Ahern. Nancy, you'll have three minutes.
Thank you for your time. I've lived here for 40 years. They've basically said what I was going to say. I live on Montaire Circle, and when there's traffic especially, they're going straight, and I want to turn right. If you have one lane now, I've got to wait for everyone going straight, then to turn right onto Montaire Circle. Also, when you have the swim team, which is up to, the members are up to 250 people on the weekends. So, are the people that, where they live above Montaire Circle, have to wait for all of them to turn right to go to the swim meet? Whereas if they have their two lanes, they can keep going straight without being interrupted. So it, unfortunately, I think a lot of people put input that don't live up there, that don't understand what goes on up there. And I think the money would be much better spent on, we have plenty of roads in Clayton that need help. I think it would be much better. It's, the saying goes, why fix something that's not broke? Thank you.
Oh, thank you very much. Is there anybody else that wants to speak on this issue? Mr. Walcott?
Good evening, again. I have to say, I agree with the other speakers. I've lived in Dana Hills for over 40 years, and that ran, that road has always been four lanes, both directions. Speeding's always been a problem. My wife and I walk that every single day. So you see people speeding up, and people speeding coming down the hill. And the bikes, they ride on the sidewalk. They're not riding in the street. And last year, I believe in May, when this came before the city council, it was a temporary decision, you're going to come back in a year and decide whether or not you want to reduce this. Well, the homeowners association sent out a survey. We have 500 residents in Dana Hills, and the overwhelming majority of them said, no, we don't want to reduce it to two-lane. And obviously, the ones that didn't were the ones that aren't impacted, they don't live on Mount Air Parkway. Oh, watch my time. The ones that did live on, probably 40 homes that do live on Mount Air Parkway, who wanted it. This time, there's been no notification that I'm aware of, the homeowners association, so most of the homeowners aren't even aware of this. I saw it on the agenda, it's the only way I found out about it. So I would suggest, if you want to move forward with something like this, you need to do another survey and get input from the residents, so they can come down to this meeting and tell you why they don't like it. I think it's a total waste of taxpayer money. There are other uses for money in this town. We don't need a bike lane on that street. And one resident that lives at the foot of Mount Air Parkway came down here last time and complained, because he said, when he pulls out of his driveway now, he gets to pull into a traffic lane, and there's two lanes there, so he's not into the main traffic lane. You take it down to one lane, he's going to be pulling into the traffic lane every time. So, so my advice to the council is, don't do it. It's not broken. And besides, there was a natural calming device there before, because the road had a lot of potholes. The striping was faded. And now, and I don't know, maybe it's city engineering requirement for the state of California, we've got nice yellow striping going down there with those yellow dots every 15 feet. You got white dots coming down on both sides, red on the other way. It looks like an inter, an interchange for a freeway. You've made it worse. So, it's nice at night when I'm coming home, and, you know, because I can see very well down there, but I don't think that this is a wise thing to do. And I would just ask that, if you're going to do it, you better ask the residents, because once it happens, and they see those green stupid bike lanes that you put in there, they're going to be down here in force, saying, what kind of dumb decision was this? With all due respect, council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walcott. Anyone else? Yes. Go ahead.
My name's Chris Reed. I live in the stretch of Mount Air Parkway that would be impacted by this. And I just want to say, I'm in full favor of the change. I would love to see Alternative II as the option. Backing off, out of my driveway every day, it's always an adventure. Turning into my driveway every day going home, I'm always hoping to God I don't get rear-ended from behind. A turn lane in the middle would significantly simplify my ability to enter and exit my house. When we moved there 15 years ago, I saw it, I knew it. You know, it's like moving into a railroad track. You don't, you move into it knowing what you're getting into. I knew that when we moved in there. But now, we have an opportunity to change it, make it, I think, more safe, reduce some risk for people who do ride their bikes, for people who do live on that road. So I would just urge the council to please approve this. Is it unfortunate that we just repaved it and we got to do it again? I understand that. Maybe you wait till 2026 is one of the recommendations I heard. But I think it would be a better situation in the long term to redo the road. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ben? Go ahead.
Good evening. As another person who's lived in that impacted area for 15 years, obviously in support of reducing the lanes, also, I think Option 2, excuse me, is the best compromise. While it's, clearly, it's not, there's safer options out there. It's a good compromise that will not drastically impact any of the car travel time. It's been studies all over the place that have done these kinds of, you know, road diets, they call them. The impact to car travels, nonexistent usually. I think with the volume of cars we have on our street, no one's going to notice. We're going to have, the turn lane takes the place of any time wasted. I, I will always, I want to share an example of just a dangerous activity that happened just yesterday, in the morning, on that street, backing out of my driveway. Two things, where there were people making the wise, safe decision for them personally, which I will never fault anyone for. There was kids on their way to school, riding their bike on the sidewalk. That's the safe decision, based on how that road is designed. The problem is, it's a steep road, and they go pretty fast. In my opinion, if there was, was an actual bike lane, they're much more visible for the cars, anyone pulling out of the driveway would see the kids. The other issue that happened about five minutes after that, car coming down in the outside lane. In their mind, I can picture this, I can see it myself, is, well, I'm not in the cross traffic, I'm minimizing the chances that I'm going to have a head-on collision, so I'm in this outer lane, it's a safer lane. That lane is so wide, and there's no indication of a bike lane separation or parking lane separation, they hug very close to the curb. So, what happens, they're going too fast, they're too close to the curb. That's the exact situation that happened to me many years ago, when my car was hit while it was parked there. It's happened across the street, where cars have been hit for the same reason. That lane is incredibly wide, it's 16 feet, I think. So, there's just design elements that make it dangerous. Obviously, we've talked about this before. A couple of things I just wanted to mention that have come up as objections before. I was happy to hear the point that there's no obstructions, this is strictly paint, so any fire concerns about coming down that road, it's nonexistent, you can easily drive over the paint, it's not going to hurt anybody. Another thing, the concern of the, the stop signs, bikes possibly not following the rules of the road and not stopping at stop signs. Literally sit at the bottom of that and watch how many cars just roll on through that. At its a slow speed, that's understandable. We all, that's just human nature. So criticizing people that are on bikes for not doing things, spend five minutes and watch what people in cars do, they're not following the laws either. So that's it. I'm in support of it. Option 2, I think, would be good. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir. Go ahead. You'll have three minutes.
Hi. I live on Montair Parkway in the lower section, too. I did get an email from the homeowners association about the change. It got postponed, I think from last month to this month. There was another email saying that it was postponed. My car has been totaled, parking it on the street. I've had the mirrors on my truck broke off several times. No people not leaving any notes. We talked about the general safety. There are people, when I'm out doing my yard work, that actually walk down the street when there's nobody even on the sidewalk. I'm not sure why, but there's that. There are the kids that do ride their bikes up and down the street. I think a lot of them, and I don't know this, ride on the sidewalk, because the cars are going pretty fast, and they're in that lane, and they're kind of pinched between the cars that are parked alongside the road. So they're taking, I think what they think is the safe path of being on the sidewalk. There are 500 houses in the subdivision, approximately, only about 280 of them use Montair Parkway all the way to the top. About 170 turn on Montair Circle at the first entrance. And I think it's Mount Washington across the street, about 70 people turn on that to get to their houses. There was 120, 130 people that, that responded to the email last year, approving that they wanted the change. So, I don't know how many were voted against it. I think it was in the low 80s. So there was a majority of the people that did vote, voted for the change. I don't have a problem sitting in my driveway, waiting for the cars, the pool tournaments that they have there. There's, I think, two a year, so it's two days, four days for the, the people that live up top that might be impacted by that. The street does get parked on all the way down, past my house, on those days, on those weekends. So I'm voting in favor of Option 1 or 2. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay. Then I'm going to close public comment on this and bring it back to the council. What additional comments do you have? Councilman, Vice Mayor Juan?
I just have a couple, so. I mean, ultimately, the goal, the thing that's appealing to me about this is, the goal is really to slow down traffic for public safety, so hopefully, everyone could appreciate that, whether or not, you know, this comes to pass or not. But just a couple items, just because I, I have to, I have to say it. There, there are more than two swim meets. My kids swim, and we've been up there quite a bit. They do two big swim meets a year, I think, that are like multi-day, but then there'll be swim meets here and there, throughout, like, you know, on the weeknights and whatnot, so. Yeah. Two, two big ones, at least, and then they have others. But I actually used to live in Dana Hills as well. I would turn right at the stop sign, right at the pool, and then I'd go into Mount Dell. So it was, it was great. It's a great neighborhood, I, I loved living there. For clarity, I think, I do have the, the note that the HOA sent back in early 2000, or early 24, 2024. And I think the, the exact number was, of the 503 residents, 129 homeowners responded. Of the 129, 86 in favor of the lane change, 43 against, so about 25% of the homeowners responded, and of that 25%, 2/3 were in favor and 1/3 was against. So that's just, that was the information that we got as council from the homeowners. This is somewhat out of order, but everyone should stop at the stop signs. Just saying. Bikes and cars, it's dangerous. Generally, bikes on sidewalks is not the safest option. If, if, if it's my kid and they're biking down this thing, I may, I'd probably tell them to bike on the sidewalk, because of the speed of the road. But the biggest danger, I think, is the differential in speed. A pedestrian goes at a certain speed, and a bike goes at a, has the potential to go at a much different speed, and the differential in speed is, is actually what causes the danger. And kids, especially kids, if you have kids, don't always have the best judgment when it comes to speed. So, I think improving the overall safety is just a general goal. How we execute on that, I don't, there's probably lots of different ways, but, that being said. The idea that a bike lane could cause, I think, I'm paraphrasing, but I think it's like, the idea is that it could cause complacency, that if you're in a bike lane, you may not be as aware. I mean, biking on the road, just generally next to cars, is, is more dangerous than not biking next to cars, but I think it is, you know, comparing the balance of interests. Biking in a bike lane is safer than biking on the sidewalk, overall. And then, you know, there's, you know, when we first discussed this way back in, way back when, there is quite a bit of study around the design of roads and how it impacts the overall speed. And, you know, something like Alternative 2, which doesn't create physical barriers, but even it's just narrowing of the, of your perception when you drive. I mean, it, it is, it has been shown to reduce overall speeds, and slower speeds are safer. So that kind of is like a, an idea that is very easily, easy to see here. Even with the side, I forget the, I'd have to look, the width of the lane in Alternative 2, I think it's, I forget the exact width. 11. Even at 11, because I think right now it's 16. Even at 11, because I think right now it's 16. So an 11-foot wide road is still, is still pretty wide. And in this area, you know, we, one of the issues that I think, so I've heard from a lot of members of the community as well, one of the member, or one of the ideas that gets mentioned is that, you know, the, that there's only one exit essentially from the Dana Hills area. I think there's like two others that are lesser used, right? But any area that you exit the Dana Hills area from, exit into a single-lane road anyways. So like, that didn't, that's not super compelling to me because I think that's already the case. And then the fact that it doesn't actually restrict traffic physically, like in the case of emergency, you're, you're essentially going to use the entire width of the road that's available to you. So yeah, so that's, that's kind of what I was thinking. I, you know, I, I didn't know about the length of availability of the grant, should it be awarded? So, you know, there, there does seem to be like a, a, a path of least resistance where we can determine whether or not we get the grant first, get the grant and incorporate within our 26 paving project, which I think, you know, kind of, you know, mitigates the out-of-pocket cash right now, which is always helpful. But I do, but whether or not we do it now, we could decide to go now, but then incorporate into 26 now, that's, I think that's an option that we have available to us. I do think that it is a worthwhile idea that would improve safety. I think the timing and execution is, you know, we can, we can discuss how that could work. So anyways, those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Councilmember DS?
The most heard complaint that I get, and I, I lived in Dana Hills, in fact, I was on, I lived on Mount Duncan off of, excuse me, Mount, near Mount Duncan. There's an issue up there where there's only one stop sign and people are telling me that there's a need to put a stop sign on Mount Air. And, because, and I've gone up there, when you come off of Mount Duncan to enter onto the left turn onto Mount Air Parkway, that, that, that creates an issue, but there's never a stop for the people going up Mount Air Parkway. But anyhow, the single largest complaint that I get from the residents is the speed on Mount Air Parkway. And what I noticed, and I've gone up there several times, I don't live up there anymore, but I have gone up there several times, the number of people that are walking their dogs are in the, in the street, they're not on the, they're not on the sidewalk. So, you know, that's, that's a hazardous condition in my mind because with the, with those vehicles coming down from the Cabana Club, picking up the speed, that, that's a real, I'm surprised we haven't had more issues up there. But speed seems to be the, the single largest issue. And so whatever is the most reasonable way to address that, I think that I would be in favor of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Tillman?
Thank you. I concur with a lot of what councilmember, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Wong said. There was a reason why I asked our city engineer the question about the length of time that we had to use the grant, because I am, I'm not happy that we just paved it and then we're talking about repaving it again. I think that's, it's not a good use of our money. So the fact that we have a window of time to be able to do that, should we win that award, is very enticing to, to see this through. And here's why, because I think it actually solves a lot of the issues that I've heard, whether it was an email or residents coming here to share their concerns with us, or even people passing on the street. You have a bike lane for the people who do choose to bike, which I think is where they should be, that they should utilize that. Residents who want to pull out of their homes now have a lane they can actually pull into because there, you've got the center divide option, right? So that's also 11 feet, should we go with alternative two? And the cars can all still park on the street, so that isn't going away. So if there are swim meets or a lot of people in the, in the neighborhood, you still have residents who can park where they need to, visitors who can park where they need to, bikes that can bike safely, which is what they should be doing. And if there's anyone who needs to turn in or out of their home, they have a lane to pull into to do that. And I really do think that satisfies all, all components. But I have a question for our city engineer, and I know it was past the questioning time, but it's, a resident said something that now makes me want to know if we can actually add this, this element to, to this. Someone said, and I think it was Nancy Ahern, how, there are people, there's an issue turning at the corner where the swim, swimming pool is. So I guess that's Monter Circle. How would that corner look? So right now, the street parking still exists, so can you park all the way up to the stop sign? And then you've got the bike lane that's still there, and then there's only one through lane, because then you have the center lane for people to turn in and out of their homes. How does the bike lane end, I guess is my question, once you get to a stop sign at that location?
It's on page 154 of the packet, there's a good demo, but he can answer.
Oh, thank you, okay. I'm on 145 still.
154.
154.
It shows up before, after. And just as a-
I have to reduce it, hold on, mine is way too big. Reduce.
Just as an anecdote, when there were two lanes there and I was living there, you would often see people like really jockey for the merge. When they were going past the pool, they would, like, it was, it was always, when you-
I'm not existing layout, alternative two layout.
I have page 153 of the packet, maybe, it should be segment three, alternative two layout, bottom right corner.
Segment three?
Segment three, but it's alternative two.
I make it even smaller, hold on. That's not what's on my 153.
Okay, so maybe I'm off one page.
It's on my 154 for segment three. Okay, hold on a second. So 154, segment three, alternative two layout. Okay, so we've got, now I have to repeat. It's too tiny, hold on. This is a struggle to get it all on one page and make me be able to see it. Okay. So eight and a half is still the, where the cars can park. The six and a half is where the bike lane is, and then you're telling people they're going to stop ahead. So the bike lane ends and the, and the parking ends. Is that right? Am I looking at that right?
So the segment that's heading in the southbound direction toward the pool, there's a dashed line along the right edge.
Yes.
That would be the edge of the through movement for the cars. So the cars that want to turn right would cross that dashed line-
Okay.
-to then turn right at Monter Circle. I, in my time in Clayton, there has been, I remember looking at a complaint of cars parked at that very corner, especially during swim meet time, and the sight distance gets very difficult. This doesn't specifically restrict or, it's one element that we would look at a little bit more in depth, that we, should we mark it red from basically where that dashed line is? So essentially, that last house, that corner house, wouldn't have fronting parking on it.
That's a new law anyway, isn't it? You can't be in front of the stop sign by however many feet.
20 feet, yes.
Right, so they can't park there anyway.
Yes.
It's a new law.
It's called a daylighting law, that, for a marked crosswalk, yes, that is correct.
Yeah.
So that is another element, regardless, that is another issue, but-
Yes.
In terms of how it operates, the, the car that's going southbound that wants to make the right would cross that dashed line essentially.
Okay.
And then the bike lane is also being, the bicyclist is being notified, hey, this is ending. Because after that point, there's no bike lane, you're basically now legally allowed to ride in the lane as a bicyclist-
Okay.
-going forward.
And just out of curiosity, why are we not doing a bike lane all the way up? I don't want to change anything, I just want to know why we're not. Why are we not considering that?
Well, this is, the, the area we limited to was the area that we were paving last year.
Okay.
So if you want to consider something larger, and if it's, the timeframe is longer, we haven't selected any roads, I don't want to presuppose any segments yet, but that could be considered. I, I think the idea, and we, we went through this process, is that when we were repaving this road, the, the default is to put back the existing striping to the current standard. So a lot of striping gets old and it does, so it has to be a little thicker, you know, these tough, different things now, but essentially the same layout. Initially, when we were talking with the HOA, there was no specific request to change it. They did a vote, but their board did not request the city to make the change. So this got initiated sort of through residents asking the councilmembers to bring this item up in May of, and that's why obviously it was sort of not ideal, we would have preferred to have done it before we even finalized the plans with Caltrans, but that's what created that situation last year, where we essentially did a compromise of not putting back the more permanent striping.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Enya?
No, I was, I was not done. I'm sorry, I asked a question in the middle of me saying what I was thinking. But I do, I think that was, my only other concern is if we can make sure that, since, since a resident had stressed that residence still going southbound straight would be held up, it looks like, depending on how many people are going straight at that time, you can still move over to be able to make that right-hand turn onto Monter Circle. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Enya?
You know, these decisions get harder and harder. You know, I, I've, my thinking is that there's no barriers on that street. And even though if you narrow it to one lane each direction, it's not going to stop speeding. Being a policeman for 30 years, speeders are going to speed. What'll slow them down is a car in front of them, if there is one. So if there is one in front of them, they're not going to speed anyway. But if there is no car, they have the whole, they have the middle lane, they have the bike lane to speed, that's not going to stop speeding. And most people, I would assume that speed, live there. They're residents. And when you talk about speed, the speed limit is 30 miles an hour. Police officers don't write tickets to 12 to 15 miles over because the courts throw them out. So now you're talking about 45 miles an hour. That's why you see speeders. So I don't think narrowing it does it. But I do worry about many years ago when there was a big fire up there, people panic. Let me do, I know, they panic. And they want the fastest way out, which is going to be straight down Monter Parkway. And if it's two lanes, there's going to be people honking, there's going to be people passing on the right, passing on the left, I know it might not ever happen again, they're not going to take Mount Wilson, or they're not going to take Monter Circle, they're going to go straight to get out of the area. Now, the fire department, you've answered, that question's answered. They don't like passing on the right. They'll pass on the left and there'd be turning lanes on the left, so that's not an issue anymore. But when that area was built by the county, it's very, it was very nice, I still think it's very nice. But I'm not convinced that four lanes to two is going to do very much. That's just my opinion. And many, many people in this town want money for their streets and we don't even have, we don't have the money to do all this. There's lists of that. And I don't think people will take it very well, that we just repaved a street and restripped it, and now it's going to be happening again. I, I just can't get over that right now. That's my comments.
Thank you.
Can I go?
Oh, go, go ahead.
I, I would respectfully say that all the data according, that looks at reducing lanes, demonstrates that you get a reduction in speed. It's, it's not only the physical thing that other traffic will, you know, having to, you know, follow the speed of other traffic, but it's also the design of the road itself, where narrower lanes tend to have people psychologically drive slower. It, it's like how your, your mind will tell you, if it appears to be like a highway, you'll treat it like a highway, but if you, obviously, if we had barriers and you could curve the road, you do all these other stuff, but, you know, in this case, it, it's, there will be, there will likely be a marginal impact on speed. And that's really, to me, that, that's what is persuasive to me, just the idea that we could reduce speed. And then, you know, the speed limit is 30, like you say. If you do it, if you have something like this, it does trigger our ability to reevaluate to see if, you know, if 30 is still the right number, which will also be great, so. But yeah, I, I do, I do think it's, it is, the timing is somewhat unfortunate. And so, you know, if we can fold it into our, some existing program that's in the future like that, that, again, I think as Councilmember Tillman mentioned, it, it does kind of touch on a lot of different areas at once, so.
You know, those are very valid points, but let me remind the public, nearly 30 years ago, I was a policeman here, Keller Ridge was wide. People wanted that reduced because there was speeding, whatever. Keller Ridge Drive, so the council had hearings and stuff, fire department recommended no because they were going to put speed bumps in too, which they did, and the police department really was, didn't want the speed bumps. So council did it anyway, narrowed that road, they have those bump outs with bushes, they have speed bumps, and sure, people aren't speeding, but now, many people that live up there want it back to four lanes. They're worried about fires, they're worried about whatever emergencies, and they want it back, take the speed bumps out, make it four lanes. So we've been through this before, the city has, and we certainly don't have the money to change yet. So I just wanted to say that. You're right about the cars and, but you know, teenagers and people in their young twenties that are basically the speeders, they're not going to care. If the road's wide enough to speed and there's no cars, they're going to speed. But that's just, that's it.
I just wanted to add a comment to that since I live on Keller Ridge since 2003. I don't know anybody up there except for the hand, maybe one person who came and wanted to take out those pullouts, maybe there might, let's call it a handful of people. The majority of people definitely still see speeding, even though we have the speed bumps. I can assure you that the problem with the speed bumps is the striping on it, and people who don't live in the area, you can tell because they go flying up the street and then they hit the top of their car with their heads because they don't see the speed bump and they just think it's a crosswalk and they go flying up in the air as they, they fly over it. So I have advocated for there being more up there to be done as far as speeding, but with two speed bumps, a couple stop signs, and the actual bulb outs, I definitely don't want that to become a four-lane road. Those kids already can't play outside, I am absolutely not, it does not need to be. And I would be one of the people who have to get out of the area. Leave it alone, please, respectfully.
The fact that the, the width of Monter, if we do, if we do this, would not change. There's no change to the overall width, there's no barrier, so it's currently a four-lane road that also supports two, sorry, not two, on-street parking on both sides, so it's, it's fairly wide. I, I mean, it's the only two-lane road in Clayton that is residential, right? Like, I mean, I, there's stretches, Clayton Road obviously has two lanes, but of all the other areas, it's the only one. And I, I do appreciate that there's a compromise in, often too, that really doesn't spend a lot of money on the green paint, which I'm not a fan of, but it, and it leaves the road the same size so that in the case that is needed, you can, literally, you could probably fit like seven or eight cars across if you really got narrow. So anyways, I've been interrupting you all over the place, so you go ahead.
No, no, that's okay, that's okay. I'll go last here. I, I just feel like this is a lot of money for a very small segment of this road. And I also used to live in Dana Hills, I used to live on Monter Circle. I think speeders are going to speed and people are going to roll through stop signs. I, I'm going to just throw out another option. Is there any other kind of traffic calming measure, rather than putting in bike lanes and crosshatches and turning lanes? And, I mean, this seems like a lot of work for a very small, and, and a lot of money, right? $244,000. Is there any other kind of traffic calming? I know we don't want to go speed bumps maybe, but-
There's certainly a lot of different traffic calming measures. I would say, cost-wise, this is probably the cheapest that you're going to get. Stop signs are not meant to be traffic calming measures, I've had this discussion with you before, but you would go through a warrant process for that. But if you're already having people run through stop signs, adding more probably is not going to address the speed issue. Now, like I said earlier, it is all just a visual narrowing, so it is a limited, limited impact with limited benefit. Clearly, if you decided like put a concrete center median or just other physical elements, I think you can physically slow traffic down more, but there's so many more impacts relative to that, that I wouldn't recommend it to you, and the cost would be enormous. So other measures you could consider, you know, it, that road is really too wide for a speed bump. People would, well, either you're completely crossing the road, or people are going to go drive right around it. You could always layer elements, right? So the good thing, you know, if I, and I'm not even advocating that you do it or not, I honestly think it's a, it's a decision that the council and the community wants to make. I don't think it moves the needle relatively too much, that I think that it's costing you too much, or, you know, it really is a, a, a limited type of impact. But you, you could change or add other elements to the striping over time, right? And it doesn't have to be all decided today. I think the main thing is, tonight is getting the council's direction is that that is your desire to move forward, maybe the timing of it. And if you're still considering it, then I have, then I can let the application continue to go through its process. But if there's a desire to change it, or change the bike lanes out of that design, for example, and I recognize the bike lanes is probably not the highest benefit for this project, it was, it's really about the speed impact. And then the bikes are an, an additive benefit, and I think it's a benefit. And that's what makes that application more desirable for the TDA grant, is because there's a bike lane involved. It's not just because it's going from four to two lanes, it's really the bike lane. So if you eliminate that, I would honestly recommend that you, you withdraw the application. So at, at this time, I do think this striping option is probably the lowest impact with some benefit that you can do for this particular stretch, is, in my opinion. Anything else considered is going to be much higher cost, and would, would either require more studies, like a stop warrant analysis, stop sign warrant analysis. You would probably want to look, if you did anything that's a physical deterrent like a speed, then you're involving the fire district, and you would probably want to study it a little bit more, so. That's my two cents relative to this situation. I don't think there's many alternatives that are on the same scale that, that you're looking at right now. If you want to change something, it's probably going to ramp up.
Okay. I was thinking of something like that's on Ignacio Valley Road, where it's like, you know, you know the speed limit's 45, you're coming down at 60 or whatever, and it's like, you're going too fast.
The speed feedback signs?
What is it called?
A speed feedback sign.
Speed feedback sign.
You could, those are, that's another low impact, it's, I would say it's akin to the visual narrowing, at least, the visual narrowing is kind of hitting you on the subconscious level, if I'm getting a little bit technical here, or maybe my own opinion. The feedback is meant to be reminding the person who wants to do the right thing, hey, you might be going, now.
Right.
You have those in your neighborhood.
Yeah, she does.
The
Yeah.
But they are costly too.
Because the cops aren't sitting there. They just go down the street faster.
And my opinion on this feed, if a feedback sign along Mount Air, you would have to put it, you know, near someone's front yard, so so-and-so is not going to like the flashing light. And then the other thing is, because it's wide, it's even further off to your peripheral that you probably won't notice it. Like Ignacio, you're probably seeing it from quite afar, and just because you're a field of vision is meant to be much further. And I would say, Mount Air Parkway, you probably don't have that same approach, but it could be considered.
Just thinking of an alternative. Okay, so tonight, what you need from us is, yes, we're going to move forward with something
That involves a bike.
That involves a bike, basically, bicycle lane, in order to keep the grant application live. And if we don't want to do that, then you're going to withdraw the grant application.
Yeah, I would simplify it to this, I don't even think we need to talk about the timing tonight, I would just say, you would like, the council's direction is still to pursue a, a road, I would suggest you do select one of the alternatives, so that we have one of those. And then based on, if you select one of the three tonight, they all have a bike lane, then essentially, we would continue with the application process. I would come back to you, assuming we, we get the funds, if the desire is to go this year, it would, it'd be good to know, then I could come back for the CIP, budget it. If the desire is, we can wait a year, but I know a lot of things happen, and people, you know, people don't want to wait a year, I get it, then if you want to wait a year, we would budget in the 2026 project, that's what I would do.
Thank you. Okay, any other feedback? So do I have a motion?
I mean, I'm going to go for it, but I, you know, I think we can all have our own be honest, that's, that's okay, but I, I would say that we agree to go with alternative two at some future date yet unspecified, but likely in the 26 plan, and not rush it in this year to save the funds. And if we're going to be doing roadwork in 26, then we can incorporate it within the plan of all the roads that would be captured in there.
And I don't know if it's too late to just ask one more question, but if we wait till 2026, just like it went up, the cost went up from 2024 to 2025, in 2026, could this $244,000 project be closer to $300,000, just like it went up $80,000?
If the general trend has been, construction prices have been going up every year, you know, obviously when you had the recession, they plummeted, but since then, it's pretty consistently going up. Now, I wouldn't automatically assume that it's going to cost more in 26 than 25, be, if, because when you're doing it in 25, you're going to do is a standalone project, so your economy scale is relatively small, right? You're just asking someone to, to resurface that road for literally like two, three days, not even that amount of time of work. So they have to mobilize all these other factors, so that does tend to increase the cost, where in 26, you will potentially have other resurfacing projects, so they are going to be doing another street, and maybe even the rest of Mount Air Parkway, or another street in the neighborhood. So I would say, it doesn't mean it's going to, by pushing off, it's going to cost more, but I can't guarantee it's going to cost less in 26.
Right.
But I think there's balancing factors that would make it relatively equal. If, and I, to maybe assure the council, I would say, it's very typical that TDA grants don't go out the year that they get the money, that's why there is a three-year window. So if the city decides to pave and do this project, the TDA project, in 26, it would be very in line with most TDA projects. So you, you know, you're not risking any funds, it would be, give you a little bit of runway to incorporate everything, and you would save the cost of putting out a bid, another bid. So that, I can guarantee that saves some money there.
Okay, thank you, Larry.
So save.
I'll second.
Okay, let's have a vote.
Thank you. On that motion, Councilmember Diaz.
Yes.
Aneah?
No.
Tillman?
Aye.
Juan?
Aye. I made the motions.
Mayor, Trupiano?
This is a tough one for me, because I, I'm going to be a no on this one.
Motion passes 3-2 with Councilmember Aneah and Mayor Trupiano voting no.
Okay, that, thank you all for all of your comments, very, very helpful. And we are now going to go into closed session, so we're going to have to say goodbye, goodnight. We'll see you soon. Drive safe, slow down, stop at the stop signs.
Stop at stop signs, even if you bike.
Okay, we are returning from closed session, and there is nothing to report out at this time. And the meeting is officially adjourned at, what time?
9:54.
9:54. Thank you, goodnight.